We would like to call this meeting to order. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Kingman City Council, held at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, October 3rd, 2023. We would like to welcome, of course, everybody here in chambers and anybody who might be viewing via our YouTube channel. Turn some time over to our city clerk for roll call.
Mayor Watkins.
Here.
Vice Mayor Samley.
Here.
Councilmember Savage.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
President.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Our invocation tonight will be given by Pastor Tony Henry of Kingman Nazarene Church. I would ask all of us to stand, and then after that, remain standing for our pledge of allegiance, and Vice Mayor, could you lead us in that?
Thank you.
Let's bow our heads. Evelyn, Father, we just thank you for your presence here in this meeting with us tonight. We thank you for our great country that we are blessed to be a part of, and we thank you for our special form of government where we as citizens can participate, and may we continue to be a beacon of light to the rest of the world. Father, we ask that you continue to bless our community and all those who visit here, help us to be good neighbors to one another, protect our first responders and our healthcare workers, please be in our schools and with our teachers and their families, bless our local businesses, both the owners and employees. And Father, I ask you to be here in this meeting. I pray for the agenda, and I pray for the decisions the city council will make tonight. May they have wisdom and discernment in their discussions, and may everything that happens here be beneficial to the entire community, and may we continue to be a place where we are proud to call home. We just love you, Father, and we thank you for all the ways that you bless us. We pray these things in your name. Amen. Thank you, Father. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our great country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First, I would, and all of us as council, would like to welcome and introduce Grady Miller, our interim city manager. And Grady, glad to have you onboard.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor and council and the public. I'm very glad to be here and looking forward to the next several months and helping the council, helping the council.
Thank you. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A.3 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. Item one, awards and recognition, A, Fire Prevention Week proclamation. And I have an important proclamation to read, and so we will do that. Whereas the City of Kingman is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our community, and fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And home fires have killed more than 2,285 people in the United States in 2022, according to the U.S. Fire Administration, and fire departments in the United States responded to 353,500 home fires. And cooking is the leading cause of home fires in the United States, and fire departments responded to more than 170,000 in 2021. And two of every five home fires started in the kitchen, with 31% of these fires resulting from unattended cooking. Whereas the City of Kingman residents should turn pot handles toward the back of the stove, always keep a lid nearby when cooking, keep a three-foot kid-free zone around the stove, oven, and other things that could get hot, watch what they heat, and set a timer to remind you that you are cooking. And City of Kingman first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and education, and City of Kingman residents are responsive to public education measures, are better able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes, and whereas the 2023 Fire Prevention Week theme, Cooking Safety Starts With You, effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Now therefore, I, Ken Watkins, Mayor of the City of Kingman, do hereby proclaim the week of October 8th through the 14th, 2023, as Fire Prevention Week, and urge all of the city, all of the citizens of the City of Kingman to check their kitchens for fire hazards and use safe cooking practices. And I have signed this proclamation. This is so important, and it reminds me that I probably need to have fire extinguisher in my kitchen. I have one in my vehicle that I carry with me, thanks to my wife, she's insisted on it, but we need to think about possible, the possibility of having one in our kitchens. So I know we have members of our fire department here, chief, and your assistants, your department chief, if we can present this to you, and I guess council, if you'd all like to come up for a photo opportunity? Andy, are you going to spot us where you want us?
Grab.
I know there are people in the front.
Can I get you a little bit of this, like, not behind this? Like, some of you up, some of you down.
Okay, chief.
Harris, you want to pop me out?
There we go. Okay, we'll do it this way, right? Thanks, chief. Item number two, call to the public, comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The council may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The council may direct the city manager to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. And tonight, we have Mr. Dennis Radcliffe that would like to address us. Dennis?
Good evening. My speaking is just kind of a point of order. I own Big Island Grill in town. I got my, my health permit a little bit over a year ago. I was number nine, I believe, in the county of Mojave. As of this afternoon, there was 230 health permits given. Business license, I wasn't able to check on that, but my concern is Havasu is dropping or kind of enforcing where food trucks could park, they're coming up here. So there is maybe 10 food trucks in Kingman, and our spaces are limited where we can park, and we've had some awesome meetings, the chamber put on some good meetings, the environmental health came and put some meetings on to tell us what we can and can't do. The downside of that is nobody's enforcing that. I spoke to the, there's one food commissary in town, it's Sub Zero on Abel, and he's the only authorized food truck commissary in the City of Kingman out of all the truck, out of the 10 trucks, and there's two more. There's actually four more coming down, two from Wyoming, two from Utah, and there's three up over the weekend from Havasu. So we'll be at 20 in no time. Royce is the one who has the commissary there. He paid extra to have the dump, so the health department says every day I'm in business, I need to go dump my water, take anything I had in my refrigerators, and put it in his refrigerator. Nobody's enforcing that. Out of the 10 trucks in business, I'm the only one that uses that commissary. So I'm not, I'm not tallying on nobody, but where is everybody dumping at, and who's enforcing the rules? When I started this, when I retired, it's supposed to be for fun, and we were told that when you order food, like, I can't go to Safeway and buy food, I can't go to Smart and Final, throw 50 pounds of chicken in my back of my truck and drive over here because it's not the temperature. There has to be a snail trail of where that, if you were to get sick, where'd you buy it at, when was it delivered, it has the temperatures on there. That's not the case that Kingman, that Mojave County abides by. I was told, and her exact words were, "We're gonna trust you." Till somebody gets sick, it makes us all look bad. One person gets sick, it makes us all look bad. And I'm not sure what the answer is, I'm just bringing it to the point that something needs to get done. And like the laws, like I said, chamber put a really good information thing out, just nobody's enforcing it. There's still people parking in the alleys, I mean, I could go on and on, so that's it.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Item number three, consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Counsel, anything that needs to be discussed or pulled from the consent agenda? Okay, can we have a motion in approving items three, A, B, and C on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, old business, A, Electric Scooter Operating Agreement. Based on previous council discussions and staff discussions with Bird Scooter, the electric scooter operating agreement is being brought back to the council for consideration with the requested text edits. Staff recommends that the council work with Bird Scooter to expand their service area and approve the electric scooter operating agreement. Carl, is this something that we are going to be working with you on?
This is, I mean, you can, I know this is a Bennett project.
Oh, this is Bennett?
Yeah.
I know Carl's been drafting some of the things, too.
Bennett's done most of the work, I just kind of coach a little bit.
Bennett, glad to have you here tonight.
I get the kudos, I guess. So this has come before you guys, well, good evening, Mayor, council members. Last two times it's come before you, I'd been out of town, I was at a conference once, and on vacation the other time, so I guess it went back and forth a few times, there were some edits that you guys wanted to see, there were some discussions that were had. We went back, staff went back and talked with Kaylee and Bird Scooters, and came back with, we believe, some of those edits, not, I believe not all of them are in there, and so we could talk about those. But I'll just go through them quickly. Contract term, section two in the agreement was taken to six months, I think that was brought up. Community pricing was something that we wanted to see more educational going out. They do have a pricing model for individuals that qualify that would discount the price of the scooter, so we've got that in there. Age verification under section 6D, operator to turn on the age verification technology annually, and they said they could do that one time a year, and the first time would be in the fall at the renewal of this agreement, 2023 relaunch. Parking, section, in section 8J, devices would be parked in mandatory nest areas controlled through operators' technology. They wanted to keep this for the downtown area. We would have some locations down there that these nests would be set up, would be the powerhouse, three other, three to four other locations along Beale Street where they would be an area in the public right of way, in those areas where they could park. They could also be parked in private, you know, private businesses, if businesses wanted them and they were okay with it, that would be something they could do. Operator and city communications under section 9B, operator and managing city staff to perform program check-in monthly and stay in touch with them, that's something that, that we would be doing under section 9B. And then the 311 city communications under section nine, also under 9B, in addition to the standard email and phone system listed in the vehicles, they would use this kingman311@bird.com to communicate. And I believe that would be the ability for them to forward that email to us as well. I'd want to confirm that with Kaylee. So then we would be notified as well in that process. And then the fleet size under section 9H was reduced to 75, that's what we originally talked to, I had put in there 100 previously. So those were the items that we came back with for you guys to review, discuss, and see where you want to go with it. Any questions? And Kaylee is on the.
Is it Kylie?
Kylie.
It's Kylie, right?
Hi Kylie.
Welcome Kylie again. Bennett, thank you. And actually, Bennett, make sure you're speaking into the mic.
Okay.
I don't, are we having any feedback? Okay, good. Any questions for Mr. Bradley or for Kylie?
I do.
I do.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ms.
Vice Mayor?
On the age verification, I did read the contract. Can you just expand upon that, how that works?
So I'm gonna rely on Kylie for this.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Yes, so that would be the ID verification. Did have it more broad, just in case, of course, Bird wants to be the operator that's here, but figured these were regulations that you would want in place regardless of the operator, and every operator has a different technology. So kept it more broad with that language in terms of what sort of technology that is. Bird specifically, we do something called ID verification, so it scans your ID, it's through our partner, a third-party partner that we have. But in terms of the recommended, recommended language, kept it broad for ideally, you know, the future of the program, if it were ever to not be Bird.
Can you talk about the one-time enablement? Is it the annual, so it's going to, can you just tell me how often or for how long it's going to be on?
Yes, so when we do, so put in that one, that additional one time, so it is intended to be annually, based off of feedback last council meeting, it might not make sense to do it at the start of summer, which is, you know, standard for kind of usually when we see a lot of underage riding, so kept it broad again to have that be then directed by the city at what point we turn that on. So that will be annually, and then just a bit of a clarification from what Bennett said, this would be an additional ID verification that we would put in place ahead of us actually bringing vehicles back onto the road, should this get approved by council. And then in terms of how long it stays on, we would do it for every ride, every rider, and what that means is basically, once you put your ID in, you're good to go. It goes on once, but for example, let's say you used to take scooter rides, but you haven't, and then you give it a try in November of this year, it'll still require that ID verification. So it's gonna require that you do it once before starting a ride, after you've done it, that's kind of that checkbox for the annual piece of it, and then your next ride, you wouldn't have to do it, which is kind of that intent of ensuring that we still keep it accessible, convenient, but have that extra layer in place. So not a complete answer to what you were saying, because theoretically, it could be for a year if you don't take a ride for a year. So that first ride that you take posts as going in place, you'll have to put your ID in.
Okay, and then finally, will it allow for passports to be used as identification?
It should, it should. If it doesn't, people can email indoorhelp@bird.co, and we can manually verify it. It's still a technology, unfortunately, it's not perfect, but that's why we try to make sure, and even with the Kingman 311, if someone were to write into that, I guess I can answer Bennett's question with that, yes, we can have it forwarded to the city, and then we can go through and manually verify any rider if they have issues with their ID or passport.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Counselor Savage?
Hi Kylie. Is it true that Bird is based out of Santa Monica?
Um, we, well, we actually are fully remote company, so we are headquartered in Miami, and then our business address, yes, is in Santa Monica.
There's an article from June 23rd, 2021, that says Bird and Lyft's e-scooters will no longer be allowed to operate in the city. Is that still the case?
In Santa Monica specifically, yes, but we operate in over 350 cities nationwide and globally.
Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions? This is, I am torn on this one, I am on the fence. I just had a text just now from a friend saying, you know, the pluses, that person, this person is in favor of, but then another friend earlier today texted me and said they were against it.
Who cares?
And I, I know we have been receiving emails and texts all of it.
Turn it down a little, huh? Just a little bit.
Whoops. That they're against it, so for it, against it, I am torn on this one. I could see the, both the benefits and the negatives for it. Certainly wanting to get the temperature of council?
I have not had any emails, phone calls for it, they've all been against it.
Okay. I mean, on the, on the one side, we could do it, we have a 30-day period where we can cancel it, and this is only a six-month expansion trial, basically. So I don't know. Vice Mayor?
I, I feel like Bird has worked with us, I, I really would like to see this put to bed today, so I'm excited that we're gonna be making a decision today. I think that they have worked with us, they've met all of our concerns. I feel like the council has been very responsible in addressing the concerns and trying to mitigate those concerns of our citizens. We did have during, I think it was the time before, when it originally came to us, we did have the chamber speak in favor of it, we did, I know tourism is in favor of it, so it's not that it's completely one-sided, economic ED is in favor of it. So with the short-term contract of six months with a 30-day out, we've really put a lot of restrictions on this program, and we've kind of, we've, we've done the best to rein it in and still keep its integrity somewhat, so I'm, I'm in favor and would like to make a motion whenever the council's ready.
Okay. And, and I see the merit in what you're saying, and unfortunately, it only takes one bad accident and they get all that, and so, but accidents happen in every walk of life of what we do. So we have a motion then to approve item 4A, the electric scooter operating agreement. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion on it?
Yeah, Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to say that.
Yes, Counselor Staley.
I'm with you about being on the fence, because we have heard from both sides, the good, the negative, and we know the negative, that we've talked about it. I think we're pretty clear that we are not gonna tolerate them laying all over the place, we're not gonna tolerate the problems, and it sounds like they're gonna work to address that, and I just think if we give it a try and we execute that 30-day notice, if, if things are exactly the way they were before, you know, we, we do have a lot of control over this, and I think that we're probably all very sensitive to how this, this restart happens. So if it, if it goes back to the way it was, we just pull it. But if they, you know, if they can be partners with us and, and manage their fleet well, and it, it helps with tourism, if people are using it to get to work, then that's a win-win, but certainly, I think we've been clear in the beginning, it was not a win, it was a problem. And I, I hope that they'll be able to turn things around and we won't have to pull the contract, but I'd like to give them a 30-day chance or six-month chance, see how it goes.
Okay. Thank you, counselor. We have a motion and a second. Do we need to do a roll call vote on this, or can we, anyway, let's see how it goes, how's that? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, it looks like motion carries forwarded to. Okay, thank you, thank you, Bennett. Item five, new business, A, City Manager Residency Requirement. Council directed staff to review the residency requirement for the city manager. The city code requirement is for the newly hired city manager to establish residency within the city limits with six months of, within six months of the date of hire. In addition, the city manager must remain, must maintain that residency for the duration of the appointment. Council asked staff to review allowing for residency outside city limits. Staff is presenting a map with several options, and it's of course up to council discretion. Yes, now I get to pick on you, Carl.
Yes, sir. So at the last council meeting, when we discussed this a little bit, Gary Likness, the city planner, watched the, the meeting and produced a map for me and sent it over, and I very much appreciated it, and if you look at it, and I don't know if Annie can pop it up on the screen for us, it basically shows the city, and then each of those boundaries are one-mile markers, and it's kind of up to you how far you really want to go. It looks like, I think the four-mile marker kind of covers what you were looking at at the last discussion, but, you know, your, your preference is what I will work with.
Thanks, Carl. Counsel, some thoughts on this right now? Actually, Carl, by looking at this map, is that the mine?
Yeah.
It's interesting, as, as a bird flies, how actually close the mine is to us and our northwest city boundary, because as you have mentioned, it is mileage from that point.
Correct.
Okay.
And you can see the city has some weird hooks.
Yes, it does.
In our boundary limits.
Mayor?
Yes, yes, counselor.
I, I wanted to ask you why, why you brought this forward? What, what is your reasoning for wanting to expand?
Because the way our city is growing and homes sometimes, well, actually, it's a tight market. Now, it is loosening up, market is not as tight real estate-wise, but I know six, eight months ago, it was difficult to find a home. Actually, I can mention my own, my own reason.
Yeah.
I have a property that's a half-mile out of city limits, but I myself, I have to live in the city limits, which I, I accept, I live in city limits right now, obviously. But I have stalled building on that property because it would, it would, you know, I would have to resign as being mayor. So, and it's up all up high mountain road, and so at the three-and-a-half-mile marker, it's just barely out of city limits, but I understand the rule for that. Because we are having such a difficulty getting people, professionals, to want to move here, I think we need to expand that limit a little bit. I, in a perfect world, yes, I would love to have them live in the city limits, but considering, look at the, look at the hospital and how they're suffering trying to get profession, get doctors to move here, other, other medical professionals, and not just, that's just the hospital started, all businesses are suffering, are having a hard time to get professionals to live here. So by, and the city faces those same consequences, so if we could expand that area a little bit, I know you voiced before, you would like to, you'd like.
I wanted you to convince me.
No, and it shows allegiance to city, I, to the City of Kingman, I get it, I do. But on the same token, too, I want to be able to attract professionals that might choose a home, a little more property, as opposed to limiting it into the city, so.
I'd almost like to have the conversation about annexing, you know, annexing properties into the city, we, we have not had that conversation in a long time, and the city is growing. That I could get behind, but I, there are a lot of homes on the market, they're sitting longer, I love to look at Zillow in my spare time, you know, and, you know, I still, I still. And, um, you know, I still, I still would rather have them live in the city limits. And if we hired somebody that absolutely could not make it work in the city, we, we could change this then. But I still, I ha, I have heartburn over them not living in the city limits and being our city ma, our city manager, so.
You bring up a good point, that, you know, we could at that point in time make an exception for it.
Yeah. And Gary Likness did a very nice job on the map. Thank you Gary.
This is great. Um, you know, you talked about annexing. I've talked, my kids have already built a home up on that property. And I talked to my daughter and she said, why would I want to do that? I like living in the county. But I said, but you would have better fire service and you would have better police protection. Not that I'm trying to throw.
I was going to cut you off.
Trying to throw stones at the county, but our, our police department and fire department do a great job. And so, um, but there's pros and cons to doing annexing. Any other thoughts from counsel?
Mayor.
Yes, counsel?
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, I'm open to expand in the range of where they can live as long as it is in the, you know, greater Kingman area.
Okay.
Cause I agree that the real estate that's available might not be the liking for somebody moving into town. I mean, or Carl, is this something we could come back with if we end up finding somebody that? Yes, sir. You can bring this back anytime you want. Find a house in the city? Right, because the current code does state it's a six-month. They, they have to find residency in six months. So if that instance occurs, yeah, we could look at it then.
Alright. Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, Counselor?
Didn't, didn't we recently, within the couple, last couple of years, require that all of our commission members be within the city?
No.
There's a few exceptions.
We made exceptions to it. There has to be, it has to be predominantly city residents, but I think each commission will allow at least one county resident, if not more. Right Carl?
Yes.
Okay, so, but good points, good point.
I'm, I'm in favor of keeping it the way it is.
Okay, okay. Counselor Savage, Vice Mayor, I know you were going to say something.
I do.
Counselor?
Having grown up in the city, of course, I love the city and I would prefer it to happen. Um, the expansion and the growth is going to go east and north, basically. You cover, is the gray an actual radius of a mile as well?
That's, that's my understanding. Uh, each, so the, the inner portion is the city limits proper, then, then each layer is a, a mile.
Okay. I'm personally good with the first three. That will get you out Stockton Hill a little more, little more outside of Kingman, which there's not much going down towards Golden Valley. There, and it will get you up into the Wallop highs when there's nicer homes up there and people might want a home out there. And then there's the stuff out Lake Ranch and, and whatnot. So I, I think the three rings works for me.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
I, I too, I'm in favor of the three. If we go four, we're out in Walnut Creek and that, that doesn't make any sense.
Okay.
Um, I, I know there is a struggle and I just don't want us to limit our applicants um, by whether they live across the street in the county or they live in the city, because we do have those areas in the city. Our own, um, interim, uh, was, is having a hard time finding a place to live. So it is, it is reality that this could happen and I would rather us be proactive so that they know, you know, whoever that applicant is, that that's not a struggle. Um, because it is, it is a reality. So I, I would be in favor of just three.
Okay. So really what's a question tonight is do we go ahead and pass this tonight or do we handle it as an on-need basis? Because it sounds like we have the freedom to change it then too. So I think since that would be an option, why don't we table this until that happens? Does that make sense to counsel? I mean, I can see both sides, but I know, go ahead.
Mayor, so then what do we tell our applicants? It's a possibility that you have to live in the city? You don't necessarily have to live in the city. I mean, they're making life decisions based off of
Good point.
these, these policies. And so, you know, how, how do we say, do we make that a part of the interview? Oh, by the way, you may or may not have to live in the city, so go check our city out and if you find something in the county. I mean, this, this could be a real thing. So I feel like this isn't an unreasonable compromise.
Okay.
No, motion, valid point. So.
So I'd like to make a motion.
And, okay, and a motion to accepting what limit?
Three miles.
Three miles. We have a motion then to go ahead and accept this proposal.
I'll second it.
And we have a second? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, I think motion carries four to two. Thank you for the discussion on that. Item 5A, new business. 5A, city manager, oh, we, I'm sorry, 5B, authorization of payment to ADOT for additional project development administration for the Rancho Santa Fe TI. The Arizona Department of Transportation has requested additional funds for its project development and administration of the project. In 2020, the city council approved an intergovernmental agreement with ADOT for the Rancho Santa Fe interchange. The IGA states that the city is responsible for any additional PDA cost and is responsible for paying those costs within 30 days of receipt for, of an invoice. An initial amount of $109,027 was provided to ADOT for their PDA cost when the IGA, IGA was executed. ADOT has expend, expended this amount and has requested an additional $50,000. This will allow ADOT to finalize its review when the 95% plans are resubmitted and to advertise the project. A copy of the ADOT invoice and the 2020 IGA is included for, for review. Staff recommends approval. Carl, is this a question for you too?
No, sir.
Phil?
Uh, yes, Mayor and Counsel, uh, our city engineer Phil Alred is going to give a briefing to you on this item and, um, give you an opportunity to ask any questions you may have as well.
Grady, thanks. I'm sorry, I've been, I should have been asking you already. I apologize for that. Phil, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Um, well, you read the summary. Um, ADOT is requesting additional funds for their project development and administration for the Rancho Santa Fe interchange. And, um, they're, they're requesting $50,000. Um, and basically the scope is to finalize their review of the revised bridge plans, um, redo some of the environmental clearances, um, and, and utility clearances. And it also covers some of their review for the change of access report that we had to update, um, for them. And then the last part is just to give them enough funds to bid the project. So in a nutshell, that's kind of what they're, they're asking for. Um, they have sent us an invoice. Um, it, the cost will be split 50/50, so, um, KDP would be responsible for half of it. So the city, uh, portion would only be $25,000. And so with that, I'll take any questions.
Okay, thank you Phil. First question I have is, that's such a nice even number, so is there a chance that there might be, they might not use all of it?
There is a chance. Um, so they, they rounded up to, to 50,000 and they, they built in a little bit of a contingency as well. Um, so whatever they don't use, we'll get back. It might take a while, but what, whatever they don't use, we'll, we'll get it back.
Yes, and of course the other question would be, if they even need more, then they could come back to us for more.
They could.
Okay, just so that that is all out there on the table. Counsel? Any comments, questions? Vice Mayor?
I have a couple of questions. How close are we?
So I talked with our engineer and they've completed the bridge redesign. They're ready to resubmit. They told me that they were planning on resubmitting the 95% plans to end of next week. And so, um, I think there's a few other things that need to get worked out, uh, funding-wise, but in terms of the plans, I think we're, we're, we're tracking pretty well.
I just want to go on the record and say that this is very disturbing. Um, uh, we got, we have to pay it. I mean, that's pretty much, they're holding us hostage. I, my other question is, uh, did we know that there was a chance uh, that we could incur these costs when we made the approval to, uh, do the bridge design? Because I don't recall that even being in our consideration.
So ADOT hadn't reached out at that point in time. And so I didn't know until after.
Okay. So this is a surprise cost.
Mayor, if I may too.
Yes.
I, I'm obviously, I don't have a lot of background on this, but in the briefing that I had from the city engineer, I understand that, um, the redesign actually resulted in, in possibly a two-to-three million dollar savings, which is going to more than offset this. And the good news is this is going to be shared with KDP, um, the partner on this project. Um, again, yes, I absolutely agree that we feel like we're over a barrel on this. Um, but I, I feel that at least the, um, the, the cost of the project is still tracking from what we see. We obviously don't know until this really hits, you know, the, the bids and all that. But we believe that this is good information that we have as of today. And, um, the contract, the way it is written with ADOT, it's no different than any other jurisdiction would have. It's not uncommon for, um, ADOT to, um, increase. I've actually had a few small, considerably smaller projects than this. Um, and actually the costs were about the same for a much smaller project. So I think the value is, is definitely there. So, um, but I just wanted to just chime in and let you know that. And I also think, um, we're going to have to do what we can to stay on top of this and make sure that, um, ADOT doesn't continue to come back to the trough for additional money.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other comments or questions, um, can we have a motion then for item 5B, authorization of payment to ADOT for additional project development and administration for the Rancho Santa Fe TI?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. We, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Item six, department reports, uh, 6A, and actually I forgot to bring this, no, this, this is one we're moving forward with. 6A, Kingman Airport land release update. But I did want to take the time, Counsel Saly, I want to apologize, but staff, we have, they are scheduled for two weeks, the report on Wallop Mountain Road survey. And so it's going to be delayed. So we are pulling that off the agenda, item 6B. I should have mentioned that earlier. But I know you wanted to try to get that expedited for tonight, but staff has been trying to get it all done, but not quite there. Okay, thank you. So 6A, Kingman Airport land release update. Mr. Miller?
Yes, thank you, uh, Mayor, Mayor and Counsel. So Assistant Public Works Director Jack Plante is going to give you a, an overview of this project and, and be able to answer any questions the council may have. With that, Mr. Pla, I'm sorry, I'm not saying your name correctly.
Plante, you got it.
Plante, okay. Mr. Plante, go forward.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. So fortunately, I guess for both of us, I'll give you some update and then I'll turn it over to our consultants as well. And, uh, I'm sure they'll give you a, a real good overview of what we have going on with this project. So I would like to take a couple of minutes and give some history on this project in particular, what we're doing, why we're doing it and what that's going to do for us. Um, so just to make clear, uh, keep in mind, we have two environmental, uh, analysis being completed. Both of those are for airport property. One is for Rancho. We're not talking about that one. That one is, is in its own stages right now. And so this is for the land release specifically. So, um, as you guys recall, uh, a couple of years ago, uh, it was initiated to release land from the federal obligations that hold them for aeronautical purposes only. And so we started down the road, um, actually even before, uh, it was in Public Works. It was actually with economic development and started an environmental analysis that was needed to release those, uh, properties from that encumbrance. And so we actually got to a point where we submitted to the FAA. And there's two sides of that. You have the air, the, uh, Airport District Office, which is the local Phoenix District Group, and then you have FAA Legal. And so, uh, the man behind the curtain, so to speak, for the legal side. And so, uh, we've been working with the FAA ADO to, uh, prepare an environmental document. We got that together, that was submitted for review, uh, went off to FAA Legal and they had some pretty significant comments. Initially, it was anticipated we'd be able to go through a land release and then we'd do development planning after that because then we knew it was, you know, time to spend the money to, to do that work because we knew the property was going to be available for uses outside of aeronautical. Um, based on the comments, that was no longer an option. And so we shifted gears and you guys had approved a contract. I don't remember the exact date right now. And so we're actually doing the development planning and that will, uh, generate the information that we need to satisfy comments that we receive from FAA. And so it's something we needed to do anyway. You know, we want to have a good plan moving forward. Um, you know, they're evaluating land use, they're evaluating market, they're evaluating all the utilities, uh, you know, and the environmental impacts of this whole thing. And so part of the document, again, is going to be used to satisfy the comments or the questions received from FAA. And the rest of that document is going to be our document, our, our planning tool, our master plan that we'll use into the future to develop the, the park, you know, and the vision that, uh, has been set forth by, by council. And so, um, currently, we're in that process. Um, they'll run through some of the maps and some of the land use planning and things that have been done. And so tonight I have Cory Lewis is on with us. He is from Kaufman, they're the lead agency or the lead firm for the, the consultants. Um, as well, we've got Arnie White, and I'll apologize Barbie, I'm probably going to pronounce your name wrong, but Barbie Shalmo, uh, both from CNS, and they'll run through, uh, some information related to that. And then we'll have some time for questions at the end.
Actually, Jack, can I ask a question right now?
Absolutely.
What size are we talking about right here at this land release? How many acres?
Uh, a little over 700 acres.
Okay, so this is the big chunk, like you said.
Yeah, initially we started out.
It's half of the big one, the bigger one.
We started out at 1,800 and with costs and some of the concerns from FAA, we had dialed that back to a little over 700 acres. And, and that has actually changed and I'm sure Barbie will touch on some of that because as part of the best land use and land planning, uh, they found it made sense to push one of the borders out a little bit further to the, to the east. So uh, with that Cory, if you're ready, I'll turn it over to you.
Alright, thank you Jack. Uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Appreciate the opportunity to meet with you this evening. Um, just want to do a quick check to make sure that the presentation is visible.
Right. It is Cory.
Alright, thank you. Uh, so before I, uh, get into the process, I want to, uh, quickly give an overview of our project team. Uh, as Jack mentioned, uh, I'm with Kaufman Associates. Uh, and we're responsible for the land use planning, uh, overall project coordination and the updated NIPA documentation that, uh, Jack mentioned. Uh, Arnie and Barbie are with the CNS and CNS engineers, uh, they are covering the, uh, the civil rail utilities and the property marketing strategy. We also have on our team Sunrise, which is, uh, handling the water and sanitary aspects of the plan. Uh, AE Comm, who is, uh, working on traffic and JE Fuller, uh, which is working on drainage. And I probably recognize some of the, several of those, uh, team members. Um, and we brought them in, uh, because of their expertise in the area. Uh, as Jack mentioned, this overall plan, uh, is part of the, the NIPA process. It's to supplement the NIPA process. Uh, so as Jack mentioned, uh, we received comments and kind of the high-level, uh, view of the comments, uh, from FAA uh, were that we needed more detailed information about what is going to happen on the property, uh, after its release. Um, so some of those, uh, those bullet points there, uh, recommended by FAA, uh, was a, a city, uh, a marketing plan, uh, for the area, uh, which Barbie will touch on. Uh, and then also looking at, uh, development guidelines, uh, for the, the area in question. Uh, this is also part of our, uh, our work plan. And, uh, as I mentioned, FAA wants more detail. So typically when FAA sees, uh, an NIPA document, uh, you know, where, uh, for non-aeronautical development, it be, could be something, for example, like a warehouse. And in that case, FAA wants to know how deep we're digging. Uh, you know, where are the roads going to go? Uh, and those, that sort of level of detail. Um, initially, uh, we were given direction, we could, uh, keep it at a conceptual level. Uh, but, uh, as Jack mentioned, FAA Legal, uh, came back and, and wanted more detail, uh, to the plan. So with that, we, uh, started the industrial park, uh, master development plan. Uh, in, uh, initially, we were looking at this 1,800-acre area. So this is the, uh, the, both the yellow and blue combined. That's the agent, 1,800-acre area, uh, which is located south of the airport. Um, uh, you know, through coordination, uh, with Jack and other members of staff, uh, it was, it was determined that we should focus on the, the yellow area, which is, in, in this map view is approximately 700 acres. Uh, you can see the Rancho Santa Fe alignment. Uh, and the, uh, we felt the beginning to the west, uh, made the most sense because of its proximity to, uh, to the highway and to the rail. Um, and so we have coordinated, uh, with our, uh, our technical advisor. And so we have coordinated with our technical advisory committee to start looking at what the existing infrastructure is in this area, obviously looking at the detailed design of the Rancho Santa Fe, and received the updated versions of those files. We've also started pulling in some of the drainage information, and looking at the location of other utilities. And we initially came up with a conceptual site plan for the 700 acres. We vetted this through our technical advisory committee, got feedback, we've had several calls with BNSF and Patriot Rail, and have kind of got it to this point, even presented this version of the site plan to the technical advisory committee late in the summer. And then kind of as Barbie's piece has progressed, we've taken this plan and moved into a more refined plan that Arnie will present here in a few minutes. But before then, I wanted to pass it to Barbie, so she could talk about some of the marketing information that she's collected and analyzed.
Yes, thanks Cory. So just a quick overview of the purpose of this market-oriented strategy and analysis. So one of the, as shown in just a few slides ago, one of the FAA's comments did have to do with having more detail regarding what would happen with this development site after a release occurred. One of those items was a marketing plan. But in order to really understand and support all of the other components that more information was requested about, we really needed to go back and do market assessment and economic development benchmarking to look at and validate really this use of the property as proposed from an industrial focus. So my team, which, and we do economic analysis, market analysis, and development strategy for airports across the country and these types of developments, we noticed that, you know, there were a lot of components that were already very solid and made a lot of sense. But what we were tasked to do, and what we've done, is to perform an independent third-party assessment based on the range of influencing factors and data inputs that had been passed our way. I came to Kingman earlier this year and met with a number of stakeholders, met with a number of stakeholders via Zoom as well, once I returned. And that helped give us a perspective from the local view. We've also met with the railroads, economic development at the state level, as well as the local, both city and county. And then this helped us to be able to confirm the vision of intended use and to provide an objective evaluation of market conditions and industry requirements, so that these are objective findings, and they can be layered and to support the composite decision-making and fine-tuning of the site plan. And that's what we've done. And next up will be the strategies for implementing this development opportunity and what we've seen through our market work. So just real quickly, our work over the last several months has included, like I said, completing a round of in-depth stakeholder interviews and focus groups, which was very insightful, very helpful. We've reviewed local plans and initiatives, regional and state, economic development focus areas. We've looked at the transportation network, both the improvements that are underway, those proposed and planned for the future, as well as quality of life factors. We've also evaluated local market analytics, confirming that, yes, this does make sense for it to be industrial-focused, as opposed to another type of use. And then with that focus, especially with the rail presence nearby and already serving the existing industrial park at the airport, we then went forward with benchmarking and industry research related to the rail industry and those users that need rail access either at their site or nearby through a transload facility. We took a two-pronged approach, comparative and competitive analysis, looking at those different rail-served industrial parks within a certain catchment area that would constitute a competitive set to this property to understand phasing and build-out strategy and timelines. And then we looked at comparative properties that existed in a far broader, up to 500 miles away, to understand what are the characteristics that those types of users would really be looking for in order to best position the site for development success. And those findings have helped inform the site layout. They are informing the market and industry preferred split of rail-capable, that's those parcels that can have rail access, and those without. And these findings will continue to support decision-making for the fine-tuning of the plan, the development timing, phasing, and then the revenue strategy from the potential analysis, or the analysis of revenue potential that we've been doing, as well as answering another question that the FAA posed, which was an advisement on splitting the land between aeronautical and non-aeronautical use and development from both a sale and lease perspective. So all of those types of, that's the type of advisement that our findings are able to now support. So we took a look at a number of different rail-served parks and trends within the industry. So I thought I would just shine a quick light on the findings that we have come across. Cory, if we'll go to the next slide. Okay, so from this two-pronged benchmarking and economic analysis approach, again, confirmed or validated, which we often have to do to support this type of research, and then the development plan, that this, yes, indeed should be industrial-served use. And in fact, the split between those should really look to a majority of warehousing-type use, or excuse me, manufacturing-type use, and then a minority more towards warehouse, excuse me, and distribution. So a good mix of those two, but that really became the focus of that industrial use, with an understanding, too, of the limitations that are already in place for those uses that would be heavy users of water, as not really, not well-aligned for the site and other factors at play. Then we found also that approximately 75% of the acreage in this site for this approach to go after a regional rail-served park should be 75% rail-capable. That means either it can be or would be served by direct rail access, the other parcels could access rail transportation network through a transload facility on-site. And then these findings then informed the split of how we would advise that the acreage be divided among different parcel sizes, based on market demand, based on the market participants' preferences. And you can see in this last pie chart, the way that that acreage would be split, and that informed a lot of the fine-tuning that has since occurred with the site plan, so that we're accommodating market-driven interests, and we're helping to position this property for marketing, because we were starting from a basis where we have right-sized those parcels. And in fact, Cory mentioned, we advised that the boundary that had been set previously, dividing the larger site into the two components, was actually shifted east, because honestly, if we're going to go through a land release process, I am positive that you all are eager to have this behind you. And so we might as well capitalize on that and have a bit of a larger site to the east. It would give us the advantage here of having an additional large site. So we would go from one large site, as advised, to now two larger sites. They could always be subdivided if that market interest changed. And that way, you're getting a little bit more of value from this land release process by having greater flexibility on the site plan. All right, and then I think Arnie will walk us through the site plan, including some of the utilities that have been shown, too.
Hi, I'm Arnie with CNS Engineers, and helped, through Barbie's research and Cory's work, we came up with a site plan that we had refined, that we initially were shown on a TAC committee. The gray, the yellow, I mean, the green is Rancho Santa Fe Parkway, which is under, you know, design right now. So we took that into account, and then we added in these collector roads, which are the gray ones, and the internal collector roads, and split the parcels up by that. The red lines that you see, I don't know if you can see some of the language in here, and I don't know if you have a copy of this, but it'd be great if you did. This is where they transload into the switching of the cars to BNSF from a Patriot Rail system, or whoever rail operator would be operating in here. And then we chose two transload sites, one to the north, that's an optional transload site, if we have enough room, understanding that there may be some development that's happening up there, but if that development does not happen, that still could be up there. And on the bottom down is another transload area. Then we have Berry Road that goes all the way along our boundary. And Barbie said that we took the two larger acre sites, we took the 192-acre site to the east here, and we took another site in the middle that's 131 acres. So the total lot acreage that you see in blue is 750 acres, encompassing 37 lots. And the total site acreage that we have right now is 755 acres. Now, this plan was also developed in conjunction with some off-site stormwater that one of our partners working on this helped us with, and we need to further refine the drainage system based on that. But we did, you know, realize that we could do the drainage by taking the drainage onto the site and moving it down the channel, that's going to be, and expanding the channel along Rancho Santa Fe Road there. So that's basically the plan that we've come up with, and I leave it. Any questions? Go further.
Counsel, any questions? I know Vice Mayor and I were just discussing, Arnie, how many parcels are there right now? Did you say?
There is 37 lots total.
Okay.
Ranging from four acres to 181 acres.
Okay.
So, Arnie, if I may jump in for just a minute.
Yes, Jack.
So one thing you can't see in here, the way, especially the lots on the western limits are laid out, they're actually set up with a cul-de-sac that could go in there. And so each of those parcels could be subdivided even further. So I just want to make sure, the blue overlay on that, I think, kind of blocks them, but each one of those could have like four lots, so.
Any of them can, too, Jack. I mean, even the.
To have some flexibility.
Yeah, even the large lots in the middle can be subdivided, and we just want to leave that flexibility for all that.
Right, and once again, this is a proposed plan. Obviously, we could dovetail it the way we want to do it.
Absolutely.
Right.
Mayor.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
What's the minimum acreage that it could be divided down to? Four?
Is that four?
Oh, okay.
We could go smaller than four.
Well, right now, they're four, but what can they go down to?
To like one-acre parcels.
Okay.
Okay.
And I believe we're on a zoning plan next for this, so.
Yeah, as Arnie was saying, there'll be some zoning changes that we'll be working through. One of the TAC members is the county.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from counsel?
Yes.
I would like to make sure we get, can you get a copy of this? Because I know it's not in our packet.
Yes, and I was, yes, thank you, Counselor, for bringing that forward. I would have liked to have had this in our packet, too.
Yeah, I apologize, we were trying to get some updated maps, so I actually sent over this map by itself, as well as the council presentation, or all the slides, so.
I'll see to it as the staff follows up with you. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Great, thanks. Okay, well, thanks, all of you, Arnie, Barbie, and Cory.
Thank you.
And any other questions for Jack, since he's here, and we can pick on him right now.
I knew I should have called Doug back.
Okay, well, once again, thanks for that update and clarification. And once again, we are blessed as a city that we have this amazing industrial park, and let's hope this continues to move forward. I mean, as we've all been told a number of times, we have the largest industrial park outside of Maricopa County in the whole state, and it's a huge blessing to us and for our growth. So thank you, Jack.
Thank you. Arnie, Cory, Barbie, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item number seven, announcements by Mayor, council members, and city manager. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. I do not have an announcement at this point, but I will keep that in mind for future meetings if there's something of relevance to share with the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Walker?
Nothing tonight.
Right. Counselor Savage?
Nothing tonight.
Counselor Ward?
No.
Counselor Sayly?
I do have a few things. Yesterday, I attended the MCC Advisory Council meeting, and I was there with Bennett and Chief Cooper and Tammy from ED and Mr. Grady Miller, and it was a great meeting. And I will tell you that MCC is working really hard to serve the community. I was so impressed with how dedicated they are to their students. They talked about, if anyone feels like they can't afford to go to MCC, to call and sit down with them, and they will find a way to help you pay for it. And if anyone feels that college is not accessible to them, they're not ready to take college classes, they will work with you on that. I mean, they were so flexible and just wanting to do whatever they could to serve the community. And they're also talking about adding four-year degrees, which I believe would be a huge gift to our community. And so, and then my other announcement is that this Friday is First Friday, and it's the last official First Friday of 2023. There are a lot of great things happening. It's also Oktoberfest, so please come downtown this weekend.
Thank you, Counselor. Vice Mayor?
I just have a couple of things. I wrote in the parade, as did Counselor Sayly and Mr. Walker and Smiley. So thank you to those that got the wagon together. It was a great parade. I want to thank all the volunteers. I also attended the mayor's lunch to thank the volunteers on behalf of the mayor, so it's very important. It takes a lot to put on a parade, and it was very well-run. So for those that did traffic control, those that set up the barricades, I very much appreciate all your hard work. I also read a proclamation for the mayor to the electric vehicle folks that were in town. They set up at the powerhouse, and it was Electric Vehicle Association, and there were representatives from all around the state, brought their electric vehicles up here, all different kinds of electric vehicles. They were very proud to say that they have an electric vehicle that is entered into the 66 fun run that's coming up. So I was happy to meet with those folks as well, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Vice Mayor. And once again, I do want to thank you and council members for representing council in these various activities that we do have going on, ribbon cuttings and all that, that when you're able to put that into your schedule and show up, I truly do appreciate you representing our city council. Likewise, I was at the meeting at the community college yesterday.
Oh, darn it.
That's all right. No, that's all right, Counselor, that's all right. I snuck in late. I got there just in time for lunch. But as Counselor Sayly mentioned, they really wanted to emphasize that anybody who wants to go to college, they need to get ahold of them, and they will find, they will help them find the ways to afford it financially. That there are so many programs out there that people don't know about, and they wanted to emphasize that. And they also talked about possible rebranding, as far as are people happy with what our community college and what it represents, or do we need to change it up a little bit? And so I'm sure they would appreciate input, too. So thanks for all of that. As always, thanks to all our citizens and how they serve others. And thank you, all of you, for being here in council chambers tonight. Item number eight, council requests for future reports and updates. Counselor Sayly?
Yes, I would like to ask that, going forward, we get a quick update at every meeting on where we're at with both Rancho Santa Fe interchange and the Kingman Crossing interchange. And really, all I'm looking for is sort of a checklist. You know, we're at this phase, and we have this many more steps to go. We are so close, and I know we often get it in an email, but I get so many questions now from the public. So I'd just like to have something on the screen that says, here, we're here, and here's how many more steps, and maybe even estimated timeframes, if that's possible.
We will be happy to do that. Of course, there are some things that, between meetings, may not have moved since the last one, but just your understanding would be helpful.
Yeah, even if it's the same.
Okay.
I think.
We'll do that.
We would all appreciate to know right where we are. And I have one other item, if you don't mind.
Of course, Counselor.
So I would like to get some information about annexing this new phase, at least this new phase, of the industrial park. We, with the development that is about to happen, as well as we now charge development fees, and that might allow us to help pay for these streets, pay for the new fire station and police substation that we need on the east bench, by capturing that area that we own at 100%, which would make annexing a lot easier, we could better plan for the future and help pay for what is essentially our responsibility anyway to get that industrial park up and running.
It sounds to me like we have some work to do, probably from It sounds to me like we have some work to do, probably from a legal standpoint, make sure that we come back with a report on how that might go. And it might be possible that we probably need to have an e-session to actually discuss strategies on something like that. So.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. Anything else? Okay. I know Vice Mayor and I did talk about it in a meeting yesterday with our city manager. And in addition to the Wallopi Mountain Road update, I know in the works, we talked about a general traffic and road update, and what's going on in traffic flow in the city. And I know, Mr. Miller, we talked about that. And of course, I know you're going to, we'd like to see some information on that, too.
Thank you. So if I'm understanding it correctly, we're about six weeks out from having a master, a traffic master plan study completed. Is that correct? Okay. So we'll be coming back shortly.
Great.
Staff will need to definitely make sure that we review it and vet it before we bring it back. But I think we're talking about maybe six weeks at the latest, correct? Okay. So thank you for bringing that up.
That's all good news. Thank you. Okay. If there's nothing else, and I don't think anybody's going to complain, we are adjourned. Thank you.